So we're going to go ahead and get started. Thanks, everyone, for being here. Chief, I'm surprised you have your back from the stage. Because we go to lunch, your back is never anything. So why go to lunch with you? So we're here tonight to have a visioning session exercise about our master plan update that we're going through. Last time the plan was updated was 2015. Should update them every five years. A lot of reasons why we didn't last time, primarily COVID, but here we are tonight. So we got a cross-section of DDA members, planning commission members, and council. I think all of our council members are here, which is great. We do have a couple of folks from McKenna who's helping with the plan. I'm going to pass the mic over to them and let them introduce themselves.
Thank you, John. Good evening. Laura Hall with McKenna. It's nice to be here tonight and looking forward to kind of floating amongst the tables and having a good discussion.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brad Meisner. I'm also with McKenna. And also likewise, I'm looking forward to meeting everybody tonight and just helping out where needed. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. So again, we are broken down into different groups. And we have several members from the public joining us tonight. Thank you for that. So I know Mr. Hanson loves a good PowerPoint. So we're going to kick off there. But I promise you, we're not going to be PowerPoint by today. You can buy paper at the table, but definitely not by PowerPoint. So just an overview tonight. What we're going to be doing in our individual groups, we're going to go through a series of six questions based on the themes up here. And I'll scroll through them in a minute. And each group needs a scribe. That's why you got a tablet there at your table and a series of pens. And each group will need a spokesperson because we're going to have, after we go through each of these questions, we'll have 10 to 15 minutes per question, give or take. You'll discuss them, try to come to consensus on some of the major points. Make sure you scribe those down, and your spokesperson will present those. And then Barb, our deputy clerk, will be tabulating the responses. And at the end, we'll have a voting exercise. That's what the fancy dats for. And while the green dats are the best ones, they all count for one. So don't worry if you get a red dot or a yellow dot. Any questions so far? Everybody in the right room?
Yes.
Okay. Good answer.
I think so.
So we're going to dive right in because you guys meet at all the meetings. And you know, I get to talk a lot. And the last thing you want to do when it's 2 degrees is listen to me drone out and out. So first question. So we did a public survey, and we got a great response, over almost 500 responses from the public, which is pretty awesome. So question one. We're starting with this one because this is maybe one of the easier questions to conceptualize. So according to our survey response, expanding the downtown was a top recommendation. What does that mean to you? Go. 10 minutes. Okay. Any table brave enough to go first? So Chief Weiss has volatored Miss Bennett to go first. So there you have it. So let's hear what you got. You can stand up.
So the list here is the guys helping out here. So downtown is creating, like, how do we create more of a feel of downtown, extending past Mechanic Street and past 304? So encompassing more of like the Foulerville Club and just trying to figure out how we can make that more of like feel like downtown.
Excellent. Next table. Who's ready?
Are we just giving one idea or can we?
No, reasonable sheet.
All right. Well, first of all, thanks all for being here this evening. I appreciate every one of you. So we want to, it's expanding downtown. We want to support businesses in place, bring in new businesses. We want to be progressive. We can't please everybody, but we still think that moving once and forward is a good thing. Doesn't mean that expanding downtown keep within Williamson, not going outside the DDA boundaries. Changing that C3 zoning on Grand River to protect the residential integrity so that if somebody decides to sell their house directly on Grand River, it can't be purchased and turned commercial. So that's a big thing. Having a mixed downtown is okay with diverse business mix. Priority on keeping existing structures, assist and search for restoring historic buildings. And what can we do to help fill the empty bank building on the corner of Mechanic and Grand River? But right now, they require a 10-year lease. And focus on historic architecture.
A bunch of overachievers.
Yep. Yep.
I'll take that.
Cool table.
I'll take that one.
Oh, you won't.
That way, Barb doesn't have to run at his feet. Next table.
All right. We look at the same thought about growing inside the existing boundary, promoting the growth on the vacant lots and infilling. Another thought we had was expanding the boundaries south of the tracks to incorporate the Ice House property because that's something that we want growth. We want that to be nicely part of the DDA boundary. Going expanding east and west, we really got too far into, does that make sense here?
Good? They captured it all? Awesome. Okay. Fantastic. Next up. In 2015, we had this series of eight goals. And there's some subjective that's underneath. So you have this information at your table as well? Excuse me. So given these goals from 2015 and spend a decade, we've had a chance to either achieve these or not, realize these or not. Of these eight, go through them. Pick which we, what we should keep, what we should get rid of, or what we should add. And we'll take a little bit longer on this one because it's obviously a much bigger topic.
Yeah, it's the same. Yep. 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 2015, the planning commission.
Okay. So for the sake of, it took a little bit longer than this one, which I knew we would. We'll start at the back. That way, if a couple of tables are still trying to get some final thoughts on paper. So we'll go back here. Go ahead. Jen?
Okay. So here we go. Don't know the bag. I can turn it to you if you want me to. So the first thing we did is we eliminated goal number four for commercial and office development just for obvious reasons. After COVID, that just kind of died down across the board, across, you know, the region. We changed this around. So number one goal, we, it's downtown. So supporting businesses, civic life, blah, blah, blah. And then we find that with goal number eight, with the aesthetics and identity, so that that's all kind of gathered into the first goal. So second goal that we deemed was most important was creating facilities in recreation. Number three is completing transportation system. Four would be planning administration. Five, industrial development. And then six would be housing.
Good. Thank you. Can you just send it over there where the deputy clerk is? Are we ready? Okay.
Will we smell some rainbow?
No. But that's okay. Well, there is a voting exercise at the very end that everyone will get to vote out all of the concepts presented. From everyone.
I'll just summarize our discussion. I think, I'll say something. I think we had a robust conversation about housing in downtown. We're doing a lot of things right. I mean, so many components. One of the things that came up with housing, though, this in general is this kind of lack of that below 350 to 200 price point housing. We had this weird thing where like, I don't know. I think our median housing price now is like 345 or something crazy. There's a lot of people who want into the school district that can't afford it. We don't have a lot of alternatives outside of what we were talking about. So Club Three, it's like the farmer complex. They need competition. Like, we need something that can really stimulate that kind of marketplace. And then also how do we get some housing back that falls into that first-time buyer kind of price range? That was a discussion point for us. I might prioritize that. Agree with them, office development, probably not prioritize at this point in time. The one thing we added, or actually I added to goal six, was around planning administration just to ensure that we fully update the zoning code to give us the flexibility to enforce design elements, to find ways for us to build the community we want. We got to make sure that our master plan, largest of the planning areas, is the implementation. The other thing real broad up is around the aesthetics. A lot of people are enjoying murals, some of the things that happen on town. How do we continue to find ways for more public support of those? So not the cost burdens aren't born just by, you know, the private businesses, but also by folks who are enjoying our public. Am I missing anything? Okay. Good. Thank you.
Good. Next up.
I'll start. I'll go here. We talked about the housing too. Keep that on there. But definitely be working. It says through lower quality housing. I don't think that's a perfect thing to be relying. We talked about the housing where all places of life housing, maybe something like that. If you could tell us.
Age and place. Age and place.
So we want to make sure that housing stays on there. We talked about the same thing that this table did about buying the downtown and the aesthetics. They kind of go together, holding the downtown where people come to do stuff. We got great restaurants, but what else can they do here? And we would mention like, you go and do experience type businesses, you know, where you come and you paint, or you do pottery, or you cooking classes, or maybe quote that as a downtown. Definitely want to delve into part. We understand that that's kind of, I mentioned that's the vacant, and the vacant lot can be sized up ones. We agreed that we think we want to keep on here about education systems. But I think we didn't really believe too many. But we did kind of reorganize maybe a little bit about downtown and the aesthetics kind of. Yeah.
Good.
Okay. So we talked about every single goal. We did not break them, but we felt that all of them still have importance in moving forward. For housing for us, housing is very tough to control. We have lots available in several different neighborhood communities. But convincing developers to invest and build those new houses. So how do we, how do we work with developers to try to, you know, increase housing that's available? We also talked about the community facilities and recreation. We think that's super important. We don't have something like that here. We used to have a very robust Red Cedar Recreation Association when I was growing up. And I think it would be so important to bring that back to this community because we have such a large community with families with kids that go outside of our community for, you know, their kids' activities. And we really need to bring that back. So what can we do to encourage facility, partner it with the schools, and also have it available for adults as well? Like, you know, this thing called pickleball all of a sudden, right? Also emphasis with curling. Yes. Absolutely. We also thought that commercial and industrial, what can we do to encourage growth in our industrial park? Because we do have such a, you know, we have so many lots available. What can we do out there in that corridor and encourage, you know, that growth out there? But with growth out there, we don't want them to just get off the highway, go to Dunkin' Donuts, and then get back on the highway. We want whatever happens on that Williamson Road corridor to bring people into town because we have such amazing businesses downtown. Transportation. Continue to work on our walkability of our community, our trails. Also bike lanes on North and South Putnam because we feel that that would be important. Our aesthetics discussed it with first, you know, how can we help with historical preservation for our downtown buildings? So balance how to any hands and how to draw from the exit into downtown. I mean, all of these were super important. I'm going to give our notes to Barb and she can add them to everybody else's.
Awesome. And we are filming this tonight. So if you really like watching game film after, I mean, it'll be posted in 48 hours. I don't because I don't like to sound my own voice. We're here now. So the next couple of questions are going to focus on existing land uses and future land use. And you have those maps on your table. Couple of things to point out. I mean, we're doing great with the responses. Part of the reason, part of the exercise is, you know, you're aggregating responses across a bunch of different folks and a bunch of different committees and the public. But, and when we do the voting exercise at the end, it's not like, hey, thanks for coming, and we never talk about these things again. I mean, it's really setting the framework. And there's a couple of things, and I'll, I guess I'll point this out. When we talk about like the terms like encourage or, you know, we have a little bit of section on design standards. But remember, the focus is zoning first. What is zoning? What is future land use? I mean, all this discussion's good. We are capturing it. We are catching it on film. So when the time comes, as we make our way through the master plan, and we do have a section about the industrial park coming up and a couple of questions. But, you know, we want to make sure that's zoned appropriately. And you don't have to delve into, I mean, you can mention it, but we understand as a community that once the zoning is right, then we can be tactical, and we can work with the EDC or Lee or Ingle County or whomever. But there's partly a reason that like that land is vacant, and we'll cover that when we get to that slide. It's not from a lack of recruiting effort. Okay. So again, we talked about the downtown. And the last three questions are going to be, three of the last four questions are going to focus on residential, industrial, and then the Williamson Road overlay. So residential development. So this is from our GIS database. We currently have about 108 vacant residential acres on 104 parcels. That does not include the large parcel, 125 acres west of, you know, where the proposed Tailgater City. That's actually zone residential, most of it. So all told, we have close to almost 200 undeveloped acres. Acres, not lots, acres of land. So in September of 2023, council and planning commission had a session very similar to this. And we talked about having, you know, with residential land, there's plenty of land available in town to develop. And market forces dictate a lot of those things. But given the fact that right now there's approximately 200 to 250 housing units in various stages of planning, none of them have submitted a final site plan yet. Lind Row submitted special land use, which was approved. We have submitted a site plan. We have a concept. So that's an example of one of those. So given that we have all those in the queue, in what should we do for residential zoning in the next five-year period? And then you do have, I think on the table, you have a, you have a table of residential permitted uses? Yes.
Oh, yeah.
So residential housing in the next five years. Given the fact that we have roughly 10 to 20% more housing units at various stages of development on the line. So if we could pause for one second, just one second. And the discussion's great and keep at it. You should have something that looks like this at your table. Now that you can talk broad brush, because I'm starting to hear the themes around the table about, no one said the tiny house word yet, but this has, yeah, I'm here. So this goes through our existing zoning types. And I'm not going to read these to you all aloud, but RR is rural residential, and that's with the big parcel up on the highway zone. So the max lot coverage is, you know, pretty sparse. But if you go through the rest of our zoning types for residential, 40 and 50% lot coverage, I think McKenna will back us up with it. That's pretty generous. Most communities are anywhere from 25 to 35% in their core zoning. Although communities are getting more and more dense. Also, minimum floor area. I'll point to that one. 1,200, 1,000, 1,000, 900, and then 720 with, that's sort of being a new action. So just to give you an idea of some of those types. All right. Continue.
Hotel motel. Hotel motel is right here.
Okay. Who's first?
It's bait shop and a little auto shop right there, isn't it? Oh, I know what it is. Okay.
Okay. Good.
So again, this whole section, there's, it was pushing. All the lots we keep seeing, there are all kinds of issues. And how here, we don't have an answer. We had a critical discussion about these things.
Yeah, but all of this I would like to talk about. Even on Mill Street.
I do think it'd be interesting, and we need to consider.
They were kind of like, oh, it's for business.
But the large, 125 acre parcel is like, with the last basis for your talk of excuse, those define where that is. Whatever we, whatever we propose in that plan should probably make sure that it's got very concrete with definition in terms of what communities it probably have there. Because I think that could open the layers in the parks that, you know, people want to.
It's hard to hear.
Where are you talking about?
We think it's off the northwest corner of.
One of the things about that lot too, and I think somebody picked it out of the map, that's Deer Creek wants to do there. And it's actually part of it, the west half of it is in the, used to be called wellhead protection. One of those called, called these days Jeff, wellhead production. So that, not all of that, yeah, not all of that could be developed anyway. Good. Who's next? Table in the back.
Okay.
Shaka.
So we, we brought up rezoning some of the office space on Williamson Road, specifically for housing. There's not a ton, but that might, that might help bridge a little bit of a gap. And then also just stressing the importance of multi-use housing. And how it's important and if that, you know, does bridge a gap in Williamson with affordable places for people to start out and live, et cetera. Also adds to city incentives we brought up.
Over here.
Well, hi. Okay. So we talked about. What we need. Don't change the housing regulations, but educate the developers and find out what can be done to bring the developers in for the vacant states that we have. And possibly putting together like perspectives to share with the developers of those vacant parcels. But also asking the developers, why aren't we building Williamson? We know there's a growth boom in Foulerville right now, big growth boom. What is Foulerville doing right that we're not doing? And maybe that's a city manager to city management conversation.
Can I, can I pause there for a second? Where, did someone can educate me? I'm not trying to be funny, but where is the big housing boom in Foulerville? Since your school enrollment is declining.
I think it's outside of.
It is. It's outside of Foulerville. It's kind of more in that like I-96 corridor area.
Okay.
I could probably pull it up on Jill because I get the notifications all the time.
Is it Torrey? Howell?
Howell, like Foulerville, Howell network.
Yeah. And I was not dumb enough to pick on, you know, one of my bosses. I just frankly didn't know.
I can only tell you what Jill keeps, you know, sending me every day. Need to have an open house or something to educate and find out what the past history is that's causing a barrier. Analyze the zoning and strictly assign. We also talked about protecting the integrity of the residential along Grand River. Where on your future land use map and even on our current zoning map, all along Grand River, that Williamson or the William Street Love Win McCormick area. And then the other side, you know, Taylor, Mullet, down along Grand River. All of those houses are currently, you know, marked as general business district or general commercial. We'd like to have that moved. You know, we think that we need to protect those houses. And then maybe come up with home-based business ordinance where you can have your own home-based business in the house. But if a house were to sell, you could tear it down and then put in a commercial business because, you know, those are neighborhoods. But we don't want to check that. Oh, and then also we know, we need to understand that the new state regulations, the cities must address on the master plan, the mandated language that must be included with diversity being of interest. And that was something that McKenna included in their package.
Absolutely. On that, and I knew that'd come up. One of the many wonderful things about Williamson, we have, other than, you know, tents along the river, we have every housing type you could possibly imagine in town. We've got multifamily. We have manufactured housing. We have, you know, right down our doorstep, if you count the one to the east, we frankly have two. We have apartments. And I'm not making a tight judgment on the number of kind. We just have a lot of different housing types. So we do have them in there. So from, from meeting the stake right here, we're checking that box. So, well, thank you. I do that mean, yes.
Candy, I'd like to address your question about why is Foulerville grows and we don't grow?
Okay.
I think there's two reasons for that. One.
You got 30 seconds.
Okay. One is taxation because Livingston County's would have been lower. We can't fix that. The other is employment. You can get a job in Foulerville right now. Plenty of places to work. Williamson, not so much so. But with Tailgaters, for what it's worth, Tailgaters is going to have plenty of employment up there. So that's my 30 seconds.
And if we develop the industrial park.
So let's add more things like.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. That was 27 seconds. That was good. Well done. Okay. So that brings us to next segment. And we're going to talk about industrial zoning. And if you look on this map, and you have these maps, you know, at your desk there too. So this area, this question relates to this area right here. This is Lind Row. Here's Williamson Road. But this light gray, this is zone I-1. Other than Medline and the USDA Way Station right here, there are 50 undeveloped acres in this. And that doesn't include, you know, Lake Lynn or whatever we want to call it. So you have about 50 acres that's been zoned I-1 for a number of years. And, you know, it's been like that as long as I can remember. I think most of you can probably remember it that way. So the question is, what should we do for this zoning, if anything, to make this more attractive for some sort of development? So that's the next question. So I'll restate that. Industrial Park has approximately 50 acres of vacant land. What should the master plan and zoning ordinance consider changing, if anything, for development? So and let me, before we launch, and you have a description of those zoning types at your table. But in a word, I-1 is for, it's a light industrial zoning. Medline, which is basically like medical type assembly, but very low impact, not, you know, truck wells and things like that. So research facilities, for example, things like that are I-1. It's a very, it's a pretty narrow category. Now, keep in mind, the more broad category of I-2, this is kind of truncated on this slide. This is right next to the highway. This is zone I-2, which is more of a heavy industrial use. And our current industrial park, we really don't, we have AmerisourceBergen, which is, no, that's for I-2 use. It's a pretty low intensive as far as the neighborhood because of the nature of their business. But where we see the dark gray on the map, that's a more heavy industrial use. There's also up there on Grand River, there's a sliver of I-1. We're reliable after market parts is, or was. So again, we're going to focus on this area. What should we do, if anything? And then again, it's, it's a wide-open discussion. What should we, what should we do here to make this more attractive? From a zoning terms of heavy assembly or manufacturing, like an auto stamper, things that clang and bang and produce noise.
Back up.
Back up would be an example. Exactly. That's an I-2, that's one of the I-2 users that kind of fits the general category for that. Little bit, little bit of a redirect because I know it's a tough one, right? Part of, part of the tools that we can use, there's tax amendments, which, you know, are just that you change the tax to add something or make it more amenable if, if it's the desired thing that you want. The other thing is like we have, and we're going to talk about this one next, is we have the Williamson Road overlay district. You can do overlay districts. You can use special land uses. There are communities. Again, this is just for example. I'm not advocating for this one way or the other. for this one way or the other. Uh, I think it's the city of Wyoming, Michigan, outside of Grand Rapids, in their industrial park, they have residential uses as a special land use. Now, there's all kinds of standards for that and they're pretty heavily buffered, but that's not, I would say a common thing, but I would say in some communities it's a burgeoning thing, so, just for what it's worth. So, we'll take about two more minutes on this one, then we've got to move on.
We have Bergen, which is a primary community, you know, I would love to see...
Okay.
And they have, I mean, you have those type of...
Yeah, 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 the, the...
They were very interested in research and... And that's just, and I'm wondering if... Because I work there now and we're going to have more facility...
Okay, here we go, first group up.
One of the things that we came up with, uh, we want to change everybody's chip and all that stuff, um, change the I-1, change the zoning and have quality, uh, housing use, this is a light industrial. That's just one of the things that we came up with.
Can you say that one more time, Tammy?
I'm pretty quiet. You're, you're, that's actually a gift in this room, it's the, it's outspoken, so thank you for that. So, um, at least Mr. Carr appreciates my giving. Uh, so, the, the statement was to consider changing the underlying zoning from I-1 to R-3 or potential other uses, basically consider changing the underlying zoning. Next group?
Well, we kind of disagreed within our group, we, we have some that say leave it as the I-1, and then some people say it's very well together, so. But then we talked about what, if we leave it as I-1, can we change what the uses in, there are allowed inside the I-1. That'd be, one example was maybe adding like a brewery type designation, that's a, is a permitted use, um, to help promote the growth, so it's not just true industrial, there's other uses that can be there. But, so we didn't really come to this total consensus on our table.
If anybody wonders what that voice from beyond is, it's Brooke Donnelly, who's broke down acres and lacks on vacation, but she was kind enough to call in because she's the chair of the media and really wanted to participate, so. So Brooke is here.
Yay, hi Brooke. Um, we talked about, you know, keeping the light industrial because wouldn't it be great if we had, you know, another Centurion Medline campus building out there? But we also talked about, you know, our residential housing needs and so we kind of could go either way. But also, understanding that those parcels don't belong to the city, they belong to somebody else, the size of the parcels has been an issue for interested developers in the past and, you know, how do we get past that as well? Because we don't have a controlling interest in that area.
Well, Tammy, explain that though. The size and the shape.
The size and the shape, so those parcels are kind of awkward out there and you can't really tell from the, the maps that we have in front of us, but one example and, and several council members that were also on planning, probably remember the Longstar group that wanted to come in and in order for them to build the facility that they would have wanted to have built, they would have had to have purchased five parcels in order to do that. And so, we have to figure out how to make it more attractive for businesses that want to come in, but we have to be able to work with the, the current owners that have those parcels too.
Okay, last group.
Okay, so, we, we have just a couple, but Brooke Donnelly feels very passionately about having that space be a solar farm opportunity. Um, and then we also agree, another great opportunity would be to zone it I-1 and I-2, but have it be a mixed use. Um, if I wrote the standard correctly, we'd be able to create special land use for opportunities that come in to zoning those.
Good. Okay. So, from the home stretch, Tammy. So next up, Williamson Road overlay district. Our current zoning has a set of rules along the Williamson Road corridor from the highway basically to the industrial park of what things can and can't go here and what it looks like. And these are all the different zoning types that are currently in the Williamson Road corridor. This is Lynn Road right here. And so, in some of our early work with Planning Commission, we talked about solely south of Lynn and knowingly, which is...
Northern.
Very, alright, north of Lynn. So, so when we consider this corridor, what, over the next five years, what if anything should we be concerned about here? And if you look at the zoning, this is C-4, this is highway commercial, this is where the proposed tailgaters is, this is currently zone office, this is C-3, or, sorry, C-2, which is general, um, business, sorry, the blue is office, there's a sliver of housing right there, and then this is where D and W is, or, sorry, Hudson. So, when we consider the corridor, what should we be focused on? Things like design standards, minimum maximum building square footage, which is a way to buy zoning to ensure that you get the size of stores that you want. For example, having a lot or a, a maximum of 5,000 square feet for a store. Something like that. Tax amendments, which would, all these would ultimately be part of the zoning ordinance. And then talking about the buffers from the commercial and, and office and other uses between these areas and residential. Everybody's tired of being here, I can tell, so. Okay. Here we go. Start.
Alright, so, we were talking about making sure that the overlay district has some sort of design standards, whatever it is, landscaping, kind of natural, organic, a few things, water pond, water features, so that no matter what business does come in, because we know we can't control levels, but it looks, it looks good coming into our corridor, through our corridor into downtown. Obviously, we talk about, you know, maybe some color concepts and stuff of the buildings that are allowed, um, the signage, looking at the signing that's allowed through the corridor, just to make the corridor itself look appeasing.
Don't want it to look like Ole Miss.
Don't want it to look like Ole Miss would be, yeah, so, that's kind of what I guess our focus would be on for the... Fortunately, none of us are going to really easily see Oklahoma since they're taking the bridge out.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Alright, so we kind of agree with what the center table just said, um, as far as aesthetics and having a plan in place and having it look nice, uh, you know, uniform signage, height restrictions for the buildings, we definitely don't want to turn into East Lansing with, you know, 17-story apartment buildings out there. Uh, the area north of the Baptist church or whatever that church is called now, and the future land use, um, we would, we would suggest that we make that residential and not mixed use because we could definitely see like a 304 building in there with the mixed use on the bottom and then apartments or condos on the top. More mixed use closer to Lynn Road. And then also, language that matches language for R-3 multi-development example, building with first floor, building with first floor businesses living above. And then, yeah, that's, that's what we have.
Alright, um, a few things we came up with. Design standards that would help transition from highway to downtown, I think that especially when we had Lynn Road, how do we accomplish a transition at that point in time from the highway feel to you're about to enter into a really quaint community? Like, how do we do that? Is it maybe potentially extending street lighting? Does it include changing some of the zoning, like one of the proposals around the office that's currently zoned there, is maybe making that R-3 or something that is more residential focused? I think that could be really interesting. Um, we had mixed feelings about mixed use zoning there, honestly. I see so many of these communities put mixed use in plays and the storefront sits vacant, that's my own opinion. Um, if you just don't have demand for retail there. Now, we are close to the highway, so maybe there is a better play, I will pitch that. We said that we shouldn't have drive-throughs north of Lynn Road, only drive-throughs south of Lynn Road, uh, from a zoning perspective, um, this is my new pet peeve, but any commercial that buds up against residential should have landscape buffering on the outside of their fence line. Um, let's make sure that's accomplished moving forward in the new plan. Um, and then for inspiration, one area we want to make sure was noted, I think, I think it was good, I think they did a good job handling, uh, kind of highway development is, um, N-59, we had Out of Howell heading north, where their Dollar General is, they put a new marathon out there, I think, just a couple developments. They did a nice job designing that, three uniforms, so I think that's a key inspiration. Terry mentioned also Chelsea heading southbound out of downtown towards there, towards 94, right, they did a pretty nice job, so, people will look for it, that's what we got.
So, we also honed in on design standards for the Williamson Road overlay, making sure that those fit with the aesthetic that we want, similar to downtown, making cohesive, um, building size so that we can keep out some of the larger big block stores using that sort of thing and making sure that it's not similar to Fowlerville. We switched off of both of them as a Fowler.
Okay, last one, I don't even need to read for the script. So, at a lot of Planning Commission meetings and council meetings, we hear about small town charm. And that can mean a lot of things to a lot of different people. I grew up in Duran, so a small town charm to me was a bowling alley and a lot of trains, okay? That was charming for us. We have an awesome depot, so, what's that? Yeah, well, yeah, I knew someone would mention that, that was not charming, but anyway. So that's the last question. Small town charm, what is the name, how do we sort of define that, and how do we make the lead to incorporate that into the master plan here in this area?
First one is it? It's really right in between D and P and like, oh yeah, I would love to look at that.
Okay.
And, and have it, you know, the lights across.
So first up is this group, so, here's Mr. Carr.
So, we had a lot of discussion, um, I think a lot of the small town charm comes in from getting to know each other in a lot of the events that we have, um, through, and using McCormick Park, with McCormick Park being really the heart of the city, um, possibility of having things like pickleball tournaments or different things down there, small things on the weekend to get more people out and about, getting to know one another, um, experiential retail through gaming stores or different stores that would put on small events or workshops, things like that where people are getting to know each other and that's all part of the small town charm.
So, we said that too, the small town charm, what is it? We know we have a great walkable community, um, but really enhancing those spaces that we underutilize, um, you know, Will Long did Alley Fest, that was a, a great community event. So taking those, those spaces that we have in the community and really enhancing them, not to steal Howell's idea, but, um, you know, behind, on the street bakery and they've got that really cool alley that's got the plants and the lights and all that, we've got a lot of different spaces like that within Williamson that we could, we could do something with. Um, we've got our diverse shopping downtown, um, we've got all of our independently owned restaurants. And what Steve said was, you know, when he thinks of Williamson, it's family friendly, fun food, all of that wrapped together. We've got really great things, so we just need to keep, you know, promoting those. I'd love to see our farmer's market become a all year farmer's market, finding an indoor space for, for our vendors. Bring back some recreation opportunities like a sports complex or bowling alley or multipurpose, um, buildings. Change our parking to diagonal so we can fit more cars downtown, um, create safer crossing areas and of course, um, we think that we have a very Hallmark-esque downtown because people are always mentioning, um, when they stop into that other place. Williamson is just like a little Hallmark community, so, there you go.
The lights and what we spend doing, people just get better.
Yeah, we had a lot of the same comments as the downtown and one thing we thought is make sure we identify, define what our identity, what does small town charm mean, what, what is it? And then once we get that figured out, you know, I, I suggested that promote, get a PR firm, really promote our down, our business, our downtown and maybe show more than just a commercial here and there about coming downtown. We talked about how, like I mentioned a couple times, a couple of my coworkers drove through town, never been to Williamson, loved the, the Halloween decorations, the lights at Christmas, I thought that was a cool way to promote our downtown, I thought it looked really nice. We continued those type of things all year round. Um, we mentioned the, we mentioned the Howell thing, just like you did, um, what else have we talked about? Oh, little spaces, yeah, little pocket areas maybe for like, uh, you know, people can grab food, they can walk back behind the river and sit down or along the, along the Grand River corridor, they can have a little area to sit down and, and visit and just get to know everybody. So I think all that little stuff is what we're thinking too, so.
Alright, um, I think Terry, Terry said something good, point, like right off the gate, we said what small town charm is, it's built buildings well maintained. And that kind of set our trajectory in terms of what we imagined of charm as well, how we're looking. Some of the things we talked about, tactics, things to think about. Is there a way to potentially think about bulwaring around our CBD where we could actually have green space in the roads, slow down traffic, be cool to accommodate, uh, the parking movement, I want to, the change of parking. Um, I know it's complicated with the highway, but maybe there's a way. Way of getting closer to the highway, um, I think as this develops, when people see two gas stations in the Dollar General, tractor supply, it just becomes another rural stop, like how do we get people to understand that we actually got a cool downtown? How do we make it down there? Something that draws people in. Finding ways to clean up the CBD, like just some of the facilities are getting little trash cans, benches, and flowers, I'm forgetting the name of the one. Alex, damn, I suppose, right? Alex, um, Alex mentioned maybe we transition to something low maintenance that would still be really attractive, like pollinated gardens and native plants in our downtown so we're not dealing with watering and, I was on the garden commission for a year, that's, it's a lot of work that these people do trying to keep those plants alive, so, something you need. Go all in on the white lights, uh, on the streetlights, I love the yellow, but the weird transition things, uh, Will says the downtown businesses feel like when the yellow's on that they're out of business, so, um, maybe there's a way to talk, I don't know, get fancy, um, yeah, that's a good point.
You mean the DTE streetlights that are two different colors?
Yeah, two different.
That's coming, stay tuned.
What are they guys, small white?
Stay tuned, yeah, that's all I'm excited.
But I can tell you, when you are pride above Williamson, it looks like we have an arrow, so it's kind of cool when you're in place looking out.
Have to think about that the next time I fly over Williamson.
If you can get down to the, you know, fly over, we'll see it.
So, the last section, we're not, we're not, and first of all, thank, thanks to everybody for the engagement and, and being engaged today. We, we are going to have a voting exercise just on the first five questions because small town charm, it's kind of hard to vote on that, but we did, we will aggregate all the responses and use that as we start formulating the master plan. Last thing is kind of general code improvement, bingo. So, rental ordinances, and we talked about this a little bit at our city council last night. Not all rental housing in Williamson is bad, but they generate, you know, by rental housing, I mean houses that are used as rentals, they tend to generate the most code enforcement complaints, so we have to consider that. It's kind of the zoning thing, but it's more of a general code thing, so, we need to do that. Garage and Roman sales. Right now, we have no general code that limits sales, as long as you stay mostly out of the right of way, you can have a Roman sale. So as long as you take your stuff in and out of your... So as long as you take your stuff in and out every night. So, I'm not advocating that we, you know, be draconian about it, but that's something. One of the, in the three years that I've been here, the A1 complaint above all else is certain Roman sales. So, having a reasonable ordinance set or general code that allows, I don't know, I don't even know what the number is, it just can't be every day. So, be mindful of that. Beekeeping, another one that came up, and this is the only ordinance thing, we'll talk about that as we develop the plan. And one that came up last night was golf carts in town. So, it's a whole game, from rentals to bees to golf carts. So, we've got that resort kind of feel.
We are not the buildings. I don't think we are, Natalie.
So, just where we're at in the process, we had a work session in September, almost 18 months ago, we advertised for proposals, we selected our consultant, we did our online engagement, and also people that participate person, and today we're at the work session with our consultant tonight. The rest of the plan, excuse me, and these are milestones, I mean, we're not tomorrow drafting the plan and having the public hearing, but these are the last formal steps along the process. We still have probably three to four more months of work to go, so as I said when we started, this is not the final end-all-be-all, it's just to really help the commission start framing the master plan. And ultimately, the city council adopts the plan, and so that's why, you know, we have these joint sessions to make sure we're on the same page. One of the early part of my career, working in community, wasn't the city manager yet, but the planning commission had worked in a vacuum, and the process ended up being three years because they were not aligned with the city council. So, and we don't have that issue here because we're here, we're all like at least hearing the same thing. We may not always agree, but we're hearing the same thing. So, last step, as I said, excuse me, you should have some docs. Everybody should have at least six, and if you can get to 12 at your table, great. If not, there's more docs on the table as you head towards the charts out of the way, right on that table right there. So everyone should have 12. Each one of those is a boat, and you can spend those 12...
Whatever we want.
However you want on those five major topics. One thing before I turn you loose on that, on the goals, we talked about goals and objectives from the old plan. We have just, we just wrote one through eight, which are the gold goals, and then there's a P-code right next to that. So, but again, that's it for tonight. Again, want to thank everybody, and we'll see you soon. Thank you.
So we're voting for...
I was like, that's the only thing I care most about. I was always... I should possibly have one more...
Businesses, you know, are aggressive.
Did he count?
No.
Do you need some more? I'll just look on that page.
Looks like it's important.
You're slacking, Tim.
Sure, you're slacking.
Chief, oh, I've been...
It's all in one.
So we're headed down there, and it's, it'll be interesting to see if she's...
I'm down here.
I just...
It was traumatizing.
I went on and I hated my parents, most of it.
Design standards.
There we go.
I think those are...
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, two left.
All set then?
Yeah, I'm reading the votes.
Yeah, it's a good time.
We're done.
Yep.
I would love to have, have that purchase over some of ours to her, you know, like if they have it and everything. I know, told her to be driven like...
Unless you...
Um, if you guys...
I'd be right.
The order of you who have got over something, they're...
They only...
There's a reason they're full, please.